All right, folks. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, August 12th at 6:00 p.m. We'll fish colors board remain to order today for our role call. If you started to send the table.
Hey, Dr. Johnson, District 5.
Dr. Constance, District Grand Handit. Dr. Hoover, District 1.
Joyce Simpson, District 3.
Kate Cruller, District 2.
Aiden Hallack, Senior Student Representative.
Welcome to all of our guests, starting both in person and online. Thank you so much for being here. All right, so we'll now pass over to Director Cruller to read our land and labor acknowledgement.
Hey, we in the Chacolet School District acknowledge that the land where we teach, collaborate, and learn and play is the traditional land of the first people of Seattle, the Duamish and the Muckleshoot people past, present, past and present, and on with gratitude, the land itself and the Duamish and the Muckleshoot tribes. As a public school district, we have a responsibility for the stewardship of this land, and we strive to work alongside the Duamish and the Muckleshoot people who have been living and working here since time immemorial. The labor acknowledgement has me further acknowledged that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. We remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working on this land against their will for generations. We also acknowledge that continued contribution of the labor of the survivors over centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary traffics, forced and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. As a school district leadership, we pledge to recognize and work against systems that have historically and currently enforced and create inequities among the people we serve.
I'd like to invite those who would like to stand as we sit with them.
Student of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, a free country, and this is all liberty.
All right, back to Director Connet. I know, it's all happening on the same thing.
Yeah.
But to review our Chacolet School Board values in group, let's just do the high level ones. You don't have to read all the.
Okay, so we're pretty good. There's five, the school board put together values and agreements that underscore them, and there's five of them: transparency, courage, righteousness, curiosity, and respect centering humanity.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so can we get a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up is our first opportunity for public comments. If you are online and would like to open a public comment, you can do so by using a virtual raise hand or typing your name into the chat. And then I think we have at least one person signed up for a personal public comment. Thank you, sir. Greg, show up.
Good evening, Board of Directors, others that are in attendance today. It's a pleasure to be here before you and have this opportunity to speak. One of the things that I've been so impressed with attending these meetings recently is the drive of this board and those that support our Chacolet schools. They're really putting in the work, and it shows. And I can see that. I'm very grateful for that, that you're so dedicated to this job, which will greatly enhance our public school system here in Chacolet. I'm a third generation Chacolet resident. My mother and her generation attended the schools right outside our window here, graduated, of course, many years ago. And then I grew up going to the Highline Public School District. One of the things I just want to also draw to your attention, and I greatly appreciate is that you do have this public comment time, both at the start and at the end of the agenda. I think that shows real bravery, and I think it's a good way to reach out to the community. I wish that the city of Chacolet had this foresight that this board here does. I'd like to just draw your attention, particularly to those that are listening tonight, to a very concerning thing that is going on in the city of Chacolet. And I attended the planning and community development meeting last night. This has been going on for some time, and that's quite simply that we have a number of council members that are interested in expanding the zoning for pot shops in Chacolet. I'm completely opposed to this. I think it's unhealthy for the community. I think the amount of crime that pot shops bring to community far outweigh any value as far as money or for those that use cannabis can gain from it. As I pointed out many times, every single resident that lives in Chacolet is 15 minutes or less, key word, or two words there, or less from a pot shop today. In fact, I'm also pointing out many times that for most of us, particularly if you live in the north end of the community of Chacolet, a pot shops are closer to you today than mainline grocery stores. Deeply concerned about this. The city of Chacolet has published this report, you can get it online, and the amount of money that they expect to bring in revenue from these expanded pot shop zonings is just $275,000. Now, that's a lot of money. Probably none of us make that kind of money. But the point of it is, is if you follow the crime statistics, and if you just follow Como News or Cairo News or any of our mainline local news agencies, you will see that pot shops attract violent crime: shootings, stabbings, break-ins. And why? Because pot is a substance that when it's taken, it's impossible to trace, and you can, the thief can sell it to other people for full market value. If they break into a local store here and steal jackets or shoes or even tools, those things will go on for sale on Craigslist or a variety of other locations for about 50% of full value. So pot shops attract an unsavory element. So what I'd like to ask those that are listening and those that are concerned about the city of Chacolet, and as I said, I'm a third generation resident of Chacolet, so I'm very concerned about it, is that you need to contact the city council members by August 25th and let them know that this is not a good idea. This is not going to enhance our community. It's not going to be beneficial for students. It's not going to be beneficial for the vast majority of adults. And if you do that, we can do that via email, we can do that by phone calls, or if you're gutsy, we can come down on the 25th and speak before the council. There'll be a public hearing on this. But this is the time to step up because we're already seeing that the proposals that the council or rather the administration under Tom McLeod, or Mayor, that the entities that want to start pot shops want to expand them into other zones as well, like CLI, which is like industrial. So anyway, thanks for your time. I appreciate it, and I'm looking forward to tonight's meeting.
Okay, Greg. Is there anyone else online? Looks like nuts. Okay. Well, we will go ahead and move on from the public comment opportunity as always. And as Greg mentioned, we do have an opportunity at the end to provide additional public comment. All right, so I get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next is our board business and discussion items. We have three items for discussion. The first is just a review of our board business, the starter meeting, our agenda each meeting, just to make sure that we are staying on track with items. We also use this as during our board agenda setting for meetings to make sure that we're capturing things that need to be addressed. So is there anything that's coming up for folks that we need to highlight or add or?
Yeah, I just, so we have on the list to talk about House Bill 2049, which is the one that allows districts to raise more local money via local levy. And part of that discussion is, it was interesting, so we just had the primary elections going on. And there's a school district up north of us, Shoreline School District, that actually is something interesting. They put on the ballot in August and passed overwhelmingly to increase their local levy for a year. Basically, we're in '25 now, so they would increase it for '26 to kind of help them, I mean, as we know, almost every district in the state is in financial distress of some sort or other. They aren't as bad as, you know, they haven't got any binding conditions yet. But what's interesting about the way they did it, I kind of did a little research on it. And so districts, you know, collect local levy money kind of from three buckets. One is the EPNO, the Education Program and Operations Levy, and then our Technology Levy, capital products levy, and then our bond payments for building the buildings. And it turns out, when you look at the yearly rate, the mill rate, rate per thousand is how probably taxes are allocated. The bonds tends to fluctuate up and down over the years because we, like all other school districts, have a bond council that manages our bonds. And it isn't always just do a 20-year bond. It's they do a mix of things depending on what's going on in the market. And there are years when that goes down a little bit. Turns out, for Shoreline, in next year, there's this going down a little bit. And so they kind of took advantage of that to raise their EPNO a little bit to say, and they went out to voters, if you look at the voters' campus, it's interesting. They said their mill rate is basically staying the same, actually down a little bit. And so anyway, I just throw that out because as we think about, and we have our discussion around 2049, hopefully, I mean, our CFO would need a chance to kind of look at our numbers and run our numbers and see how that works out. But it's, you know, it's conceivable that we could have put something on the ballot in November, but the day has passed for that. So we could put something on the ballot in February of 2026 for a one or two year. But we need to, like I said, just look at all the numbers. And when we have that discussion, I think that could be one of the options that we look into. So anyway, I pass that information on to Dr. Jose, and when we get to that point, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, we're working with our company that supports us for levy work, and they're actually doing some analysis for us.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll have some data for all of you to look at so that we can see if it's even feasible.
We just need kind of all the options on the table with all the numbers so we know exactly what's going on.
And it's safe, we were looking at October-ish to kind of have that discussion.
Yeah. If we wanted to put something on the ballot in February, the deadline is December 15th or something.
Okay, so you gotta work backwards from there.
Yeah, so October will be great for timing for that.
Okay, great. Anything else on the board business? All right, so next is our review of the board presentation calendar. So just as kind of a quick kind of overview of some shifts that are like happening right now. And it's definitely been a little bit of a multi-year process as Dr. Verjosa has come in and really kind of seen how the board does that work. And more specifically, the reports and the presentations that have been, just I think, holdouts requested years past that we wanted to do some, you know, making sure that they still made sense. And also consolidating presentations to make sure that, you know, we were really seeing the fullest picture that we can when presentations were given. One of the things that was definitely happening is we were getting fragments of all these little pieces of data that weren't really seen under the umbrella, like, you know, kind of the full picture of what we want to see to really be able to get a sense for how things are going. Anyway, so this is a presentation calendar with all of those things in mind. So just want to bring up, if there's anything that feels, if folks need some clarity or maybe what's something that feels like it might not be present, that was in the past. Yes, there's just some open dialogue about what's here and what might not be.
I think, good question, thank you. So I think the really good thing that I'm curious a little bit about, and I remember having a conversation about a year ago, and we were talking about that what is being taught to the kids, right, the education part of it. I've had, we've had presentations of them coming up saying, we don't have this curriculum. We don't have a unified curriculum across the different elementary schools and some other things. And so I think a presentation of where we are, that's it. And then Dr. Verjosa, I know I emailed you about kind of, maybe we need a presentation from that board. That's why I kind of brought that up, of who's on the curriculum board, and they could come and present what they're looking at, why they're choosing to kind of look that direction, and how does that best service our kids? And I remember, like, Director Larson, you talked, when I brought this up before you and said that you haven't had a presentation of kind of what's being out there ever. So I think that would be a good, because I'd like to see the board to see kind of the direction of where the school should set, and then who's, you know, and then making sure that all of our schools are in line with that and working together to do it. So I'm not sure where that kind of fits in. I don't know if that's under teaching and learning or where you would teach it.
Teaching and learning, yeah. So we can put it under, so we probably have to add, because every year, so just to give a little explanation, so, and we've been, Director Simpson and I have been talking, and we have our one-to-ones. So the board did adopt post-COVID two curriculum adoptions. They adopted a six, eight science adoption, and we adopted a K5 math adoption. So in order to understand what we're doing, we actually did visits in schools specifically focused on the implementation of those adoptions. So, but one of the things that have risen up and has been, that I've even highlighted as a risk, you highlighted as a risk, is we need a literacy adoption. We need one K8. And we adopted one a long time ago, but there's been some recent news and research that says it hasn't been a good curriculum for kids. And so we need to have something that's really strong K8. And so our curriculum council has been, we had a meeting last year, and it's our curriculum council, and it's actually very clearly laid out the scope and work of our curriculum council, which comprises of principals, district staff, and educators all throughout, representing all the disciplines where they meet. And so they actually were the ones who were involved in all of the curriculum adoptions. They don't decide what curriculums, they actually make recommendations to the superintendent and the board, and then we go through that process of adopting a curriculum. So we need to start that process. Every year, we actually get new applicants, so we create a new curriculum council. So that's the process that he's talking about. And so if they're just launching for the fall with something to recommend mid-year, my guess is that it would be important that in the mid-year that we have teaching and learning or the curriculum council representatives present their recommendations to the board. And so that would be my suggestion, so that you would know where they're at and what they're recommending so that we can move forward.
I think any, from my thinking, is sure, I think we just need to get it on there, who it is, because I don't think that's happened in the past, with my understanding. And so I want to make sure that this is something that is unformed here. That's right, because what I heard you just say is that the council's supposed to present to the superintendent and the board.
Well, actually, the representative, the chief academic officer has presented on behalf of the curriculum council to the board the recommendations, but not the curriculum council themselves.
Okay, so I'm missing that, then I guess that's the disconnect where I'm missing, is that if Mr. Webbeck is up here, and he's representing them about curriculums that are coming here, I'm totally missing that.
Okay. Well, and I feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, but it was mostly about the curriculums that were being piloted, rather than like, here's a list of all of the curriculums that we have, here's when they were last reviewed, here's when we adopted them, all of those things. So I think it would actually be interesting to like, here's the cycle of our curriculum, where we're at again, like where they, when they were adopted. You know, so then, then, you know, something that's 15 years old might be worth it being like, hey, do we want to look at this and make sure it's still, still the right thing? So I wonder if it's kind of both of those things. Something else that made me kind of think of is, let's just add, sorry, another thing, but what would it look like to have like a committee overview? Not just of the curriculum committee, but, you know, there, I was looking through the board handbook, right? And there's several different committees that the districts have that, you know, sometimes board members go to, sometimes we don't. But we're not necessarily ongoing members of those committees. But even like, a high level, here are the committees, and here are their primary goals and objectives for this year. You know, like, so at least kind of give us maybe some insight about what those committees are focusing on so that we can also make sure that we're providing the support, whatever support we need. Oh, does that feel?
No, it's possible.
Or is that feel like too much in the weeds of?
No, I think what we can do, so I'm trying to synthesize all of this. I think what we can do, so we're starting this new process where the chief academic officer in September will be, it's actually in September, he's presenting a program presentation. And this is completely new. So he's going to be presenting on summer school, early learning, college and the high school, MLL to language, or Afghan Refugee Success Program Evaluation for 2090 Accountability and Student Achievement Goals. I think under that, I can add, because it's actually he and I are presenting, co-presenting that, I can add, to your point, I actually did, met with all of the advisory, curriculum advisory teams in the spring to get data. And Miss, I'm going to call up Miss Maugh as well, she did as well. She met with her teams, where we did equity analysis, used Serena Hammond's landscape analysis tool to sort of ask our curriculum groups, so MLL advisory, our curriculum council, our special education advisory groups, our various advisory groups, sort of like a two-year pulse check where we are in professional development, what are their goals, what's been working, what hasn't been working. I think, because that's, we could list those groups.
Yes.
We can list who they are, when they need, how often they need. Some of it's codified in our CBA language, so we can also reference that as well. And then we can, I can give an update on what they share. High-level update on where, what they shared, what were the themes, and what are the shifts we're making to do that. So that can happen in the fall to sort of give you an update on those committees, where we are, and what they're telling us what they need. So I think that'd be useful information. And then also, so for example, that actually connects to curriculum, because actually curriculum came up in them. And so the three curriculums that are up for, that they'd like to discuss for future planning is K8 literacy, K5 science, and six, eight math. Those are the big ones. Now, high school is a whole other piece of conversation, and this is such a different process. But for right now, that's what they're homing in on, is their focus. I can work with Ms. Parker to talk about if there's any curriculum recommendations at the high school level. But that is the recommendation right now to dig into and sort of find out recommendations for piloting and also the determining if there's any curriculum. So we can share all of that, I think I can add that in September's under TNL program presentation. And then after the launch of the curriculum council, when they actually have recommendations for all the curricular pieces, and they can give a history of the last five years of curriculum adoptions and such, then we can present that probably to the board mid-year, but they need to get going and start that work.
Yeah, so we actually have in the past, we had the list of all the curriculum and where they were, just what you were describing, just we haven't seen it for a while.
Okay.
I have a nice.
Revitalize that.
Yeah, that needs, definitely needs to be revitalized because, going back to your piecemeal comment, I mean, we, you know, we get, okay, I want to accept this pilot or do this curriculum, but we don't see the big picture. Where are we in, you know, oh, by the way, reading hasn't been updated in five years, 10 years, whatever. So, I mean, we definitely need that context. And, you know, that shouldn't be extra work, because we should have it, I mean, we should have that anyway, and to be keeping track of that. So that's for sure.
I kind of want to chime in, oh, sorry.
The other thing I was gonna, the other factor that we've come into this also is OSPI standards. So OSPI is, from time to time, they update their standards for reading for all these different curriculum. And so on this, on this big picture of, you know, here's the last time we did this curriculum and so forth, we also need to have on there, when is OSPI updating standards so that we can kind of hopefully sync our standard adoption into what OSPI is doing so we don't get behind, you know, everybody in that regard. So that's the other kind of dynamic that's floating in here. And then the last thing, I just, I did meet with, actually, the State Treasurer about another one that's, I know our students care about, we care about financial literacy, which, and that's going to be, again, our state standards for that.
Yeah.
And we need to figure out, and that needs to be, even so effectively, it can be integrated into math, into various places. So, yeah, and this whole big, as we look at the big picture of curriculum, we need to kind of see kind of all those things and how they fit to.
So Scott Webbeck, I have to direct to Cruller. Scott Webbeck currently is at the Financial Literacy Training right now in Everett, coming back.
Yeah.
So to give us that information and then connected to the standards. The state was supposed to launch new updated ELA math standards for the summer. They're not done.
Yeah.
So the goal is to have them done before November. So just to let you know, so as soon as we get those, we have to make sure those are incorporated, which is why our ELA and math curriculum and all those pieces, so.
And the other part of that, too, that I've learned from the State Treasurer, there are dollars, there are grant dollars available out there for doing some of this work. So we always, you know, need to be latching on to any grants that are, that may be available for doing some of this work, is really helpful in our grant financial situation.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So anyway, I was going to mention the grants, but at the same time, I also just want to step back, make sure this doesn't turn into a big staff, you know, bureaucratic process. It sounds like, Constance, you're saying enough and saying it's doable. It's doable. One of the things I heard you touch on underscores, I'd like to know who is on each of all these committees and commissions and things, and I'd also like to understand the length of time they've been on them. In some cases, we may want to consider churn, and other cases, we may be valuing the experience and context that people bring to the table. So I think we should be situationally aware. If memberships are inert and there's not enough representation, like I often like to say statistically valid, you know, representation of either parents or faculty or students in our community, then we should be aware of that as a board.
Change rate of questions that might move from my curiosity. That OSPI standards update, are those on a regular cadence that we could actually sync up with? Or do they just kind of happen when they think they should have?
Was it yearly?
Sure.
No, I mean, not nearly.
We haven't had these updated for decades.
Yeah, it's been a year, I was thinking that time.
The iteration was 2012 or something.
Oh, wow, okay, so.
Yeah, so over a decade, cool.
And then when standards get updated, which sounds like very frequent language changes, maybe it's good, maybe it's not, I don't, whatever. But so when standards get updated, but curriculum does not, how do we do that?
Curriculum does, so new curriculum or old curriculum, like those national companies, they work, they quickly jump to adopt.
So it sounds like we're trying to supplement.
No, but we do, so but if we buy curriculum that's sort of not our, we have self-created curriculum or our teachers have created units, that is additional work our teachers have to do to ensure. And the one thing I did ask OSPI, which is really critical for our district, is I said, are you going to align the ELD standards, language standards, to this curriculum? And they assured me yes. So just saying. Anyway, okay, they assured me yes, they're going to be doing that.
And, you know, we've seen this before, the national companies will change, but sometimes they, you know, sometimes a different curriculum is now better, more aligned to this.
So we have to buy a new curriculum.
Well, yeah, and that's a judgment call that depend on our curriculum council.
Yeah, okay.
To make it.
So the improvement for me, for our teachers, is really critical in terms of like their PLCs, their OPAL time, there are all of these little things that we have created in our system is the time for teachers to dig into the work. And so that's why it's critical that we actually have some of these things.
And all of this, of course, has big budget implications because curriculum costs money, training costs money, you know, and so we need to kind of, as we're thinking about the budget, figure out, okay, which of these curriculum are really important to the board?
As we say all of this, because we start out on calendar, when are we going to insert this information in presentation?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, that on the 9/23 meeting, so it's the 2/23, that'll be added as an additional part of the teaching and learning presentation.
Okay. And then I think for the next part, which would be the committee piece.
The committee piece.
That would be probably best, because it'll, I'll have to work with the curriculum council if they have a recommendation. But I can gather probably the curriculum adoptions for the last five years where we currently have, and then like what are future adoption considerations? Because we do have to plan that out and work with our CFO. And then, and then that piece around the curriculum council presenting, I think that could be mid-year. But I want to make work with them to see when they're going to have the recommendation, how they can present without a recommendation, because then the board can then vote on those recommendations.
And then I want to be sure, the makeup of the committees is not known right now, because you said they may.
They actually, they refresh, so somehow, so back to Director Cruller's comment, so some of this is codified in our bargaining contracts. And so our bargaining contracts actually have. Are our bargaining contracts. And so our bargaining contracts actually have clear outlines on when those positions get renewed. How often, on a map, not all of them, but many of them. And so that is, so we have to go, we're going through that process right now.
Perfect. Good to know. Um, and then one other counter comment, I don't want us to trouble, but it seems like we've got the facilities gal. Reporting out sometime in the spring, like the late May or May. And I'm gonna point it out, like, I know we've wanted stuff earlier, like what the plan is as opposed to what we've been doing. And I see the topics are like landscaping and summer things, so maybe it's appropriate, then again, not trying to stir and move it, but I wanna point it out and just say, is it what we want?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I can reflect a little bit on that. I think spring is a good time because most of the projects get done during the summer. So that's what I think we were kind of asking for, you know, uh, review of what, you know, how we're spending all the capital projects.
I just recall when we had the water main breaks, or sorry, the water breaks, uh, pipe breaks.
Yeah.
Everybody was like, why don't we get these reports in the fall? So I was like, and again, I don't want to make it move, I just wanna reflect that was. We're going back and forth a lot and maybe that's appropriate, but.
Well, I need another um.
I just don't wanna hear.
But I think the spring one makes sense now whether we wanna, you know, fortunately, as a reason, we didn't have a, a pipe break this winter, but. If we be, and I think there was a lot of things, I know there's a lot of things done to make sure that's.
Yes, yes, and so we were watching that pretty close, I think. So. I don't wanna add to third point or anything else, maybe it becomes like a five-minute brief on seasonal preparedness. Right? Something quick, so we have to understand it, it's not a full report.
So you're saying, uh, I'm just clarifying this just for the record to make sure that um. Dipper has that for the record and for the minutes, just, you're asking for a um, a pre-winter maybe check-in.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
So it always makes sense.
So we're always kind of got our eyes on the ball here.
I'm making my action items right here.
And, and then I think it also. Super high.
Yeah, but we don't want to be a long, twenty-five page presentation.
Yeah, how are we winterizing things appropriately? And I think, you know, it also just means that. As a board, when we're looking at that list that does come in the spring, we are trying to think. Uh, ten months ahead to say, okay, if we're prioritizing projects, we know that our water pipes keep. Bursting in the wintertime, then we might need to up that, you know, so then we just need to take all that information into that conversation. Um, but yeah, so winterization. In the November, December. Cool. Thank you for that. Uh, any other thoughts, additions, things to? So this is, you know, the, the presentation that, or the, the calendar that then all of the draft agendas are. Um, made from certainly doesn't mean that things don't get added or changed, or, you know, as business, um, you know, presents itself and. And priorities, emerging things come up. So, um, this is the, the guide that was forefollows to get those set. Okay, um, next, we're gonna talk about the lease amendments. Um, so this is our ongoing discussion, um, just nailing down these final few things around the parking. Uh, amendment with uh the pool district. Um, so thank you so much for the tracking of changes. Uh, that was really helpful for uh so, some of our brains. Um, to really be able to see where those changes took place. I just wanna clarify something. So we got an email with some additional updates that are not included.
Good answer. That's correct.
Okay, so um, board members in front of you is a, a, a copy of just some additional.
That's from our legal team.
Yeah, from our legal team, with just some additional clarifications. Um, so uh, we should kind of talk through those and then I, I, especially since the folks going here, I just wanna check. On those few items that we wanted to make sure were clear, um, after our last discussion, um. If, if this is getting us closer uh to, to the clarity that, that you all need and.
I think it's getting really close. Um, I'm gonna just say that with only one exception, and I'm gonna tip off. That Charlie's one spot that he's gonna bring it up. Um, I'm okay with all the adjustments that I saw. In the track changes, I'm, I'm okay with this uh language suggestions that are highlighted. Uh, with the one exception being what Charlie's gonna talk about.
Okay, well, there you go. No, no, I just, we, it just. When the recommendation is in here, we just talked about the show alter, the little turnaround, that was gonna be her emergency. So that last paragraph of the highlighted for exhibit A on the show was supposed to be off limits anyways. Per the last conversation, I thought we were all on board on that. Frankly, that just needs to be taken out of his language. Uh, it's supposed to be the last paragraph on the doc.
It was the exhibit, the, the graph. Yeah, we, we talked about it. Was that something that just got included in our email to the attorney that we didn't? That it wasn't updated?
No, it was updated.
Okay.
So if you look here, this is the updated one. So what I invited was the original lease that has gone back and forth with the track changes in it. And the original part, I think that this is the one that's now updated, it's sent to me separately, which I thought would be.
Can you, can I, can you please clarify this on us? Could we create it out?
No, it, it, yes, when the, when we had talked about the, remember the roundabout area at Showalter? We had taken that out because it was deemed that it was four-part. So that's all on my document I have in front of me. It's just asking the question of, is that supposed to be highlighted? And I'm just saying no, that we took that out already.
It's not there. So what is here is accurate?
Yes, so I made sure that what was in red is what, in our discussion last quarter, just for transparency and clarity. Since everybody had questions on this document. So red, we're all of agreement is unavailable due to bio urgency access so on. Uh, yellow is Showalter and then anything in green is what we were previously talking about, we're agreeing on.
That's good, yeah. So then, does it awarding language?
I, I think, I think what's in this memo is not applicable, cause I, I'm looking even, even on this. Um, what was in board docs today has the old image.
Yeah.
So I, my, my assumption is maybe that's the person to the attorney. It's all, so I think we can, I think we can ignore that paragraph.
And drop.
We all agree that this is what is accurate.
Okay.
And what's in the, the updated. Okay, great.
Um, and then just to let the, both district, don't, just FYI, the, um, just for your information. Um, the legal team only sent us their recommended language around one P M today, which is why they're discussing that right now. So I just wanted to.
And I'm happy to share those things. Um, so uh, the, the, the first one, uh, and it's mostly just um. Uh, being intentional about clarifying what we mean, right? So it's just, it's just getting us all towards better clarity. So. Um, access to the service center parking area during district high capacity events. Um, I think there was some, a recommendation to make sure that we are uh. Determining what necessary access means. Um, if it's beyond that general hours of operating, um, so what does it mean? Um, what does that access look like? Let me find that paragraph. That's in section one point two. So essentially. When this, the service center parking lot is closed. Are there any other access restrictions to the pool? I think it's kind of what I have already. And so we should clarify that, right? Um, and what? We had discussed, or my, I guess my assumption is that if key is given, um. Then they have access to the parking lot and they need access to the parking lot.
Correct.
Yeah, but I think it was just coming down to how many keys and who's responsible.
Um, okay, so we need to add something in that paragraph one point two point three. Um, there's. Essentially.
Copy this and put it on, work on, share it so that.
That'll be helpful, yeah. So in section one point two point three, what we're saying is clarify, because basically what it says, the service center lot is typically open. And it's closed on the weekends, but it doesn't say what that means for you all as users uh when it's closed. Um, so we see to clarify. T P M D can use the parking lot during closed hours via the key, right? Does that make sense?
We have two keys.
Oh.
Two copies.
It's here, doesn't it? Yeah, that's fine. And they're just not gonna come with it. And then you're just responsible for locking it up when it's all said and done. And then that, we just sent over the damages. I think this document share. Probably would be helpful.
Okay.
That's one point two.
You guys have a copy of this memo?
It's not there, Deb. It says hello. The lease agreement, it says lease agreement, I want T S D for the rights.
You guys see that or thing? Um, so the other ones were just really small work changes. Uh, so instead of saying unauthorized, you say duplication of the key, it's prohibited. Um. Yeah. Any uh issues or concerns around these minor work changes? Totally.
Yeah, except for them if they.
Yeah, let's make it clear, this is a wrap.
Legal team, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the one uh discussion that we do need to have is uh that, that third paragraph there, um, about um. Uh, damages, just not including damages. Um, so in the agreement right now, it references district parking areas. Um, and what this is, um, uh, the suggestion of the recommendation is that we make clear that it would be any um property. Um, whether that might be privately owned, of any damages um done to property um as a result of. Um, yeah.
Cool.
Uh, damage, yeah, full, full parking patron.
So are we gonna suggest some language that of damage? Are we gonna go E G?
I mean, I think that's what we're discussing. Yeah, what else you have?
So I would just start listing things to the facilities, so. Parking lot itself, any signage, and you just do E G, so I know it's not a complete list.
Okay.
And then other vehicles.
Well, the attorney said that he, he could write the details.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
He just didn't have the.
But he was summarizing, yeah, okay.
Any concerns from the pool folks about adding some specific language around bringing damages there?
Yeah, I do have issues, but not, not that, but the next paragraph.
One point two point five or.
One point two point four.
Yeah, one point two. Right.
Something that got changed.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So that last sentence, T P M D will monitor the use of district parking lots, and we had a discussion about what.
What that would mean, yeah.
So I don't see any clarity.
We didn't add any clarification, yeah. So we need to specifically outline what we mean by monitor, right? So does that mean that a T P M B? Uh, or T P M, oh my gosh, T P M B T employee will be there? Does that mean? They're just, like, what, what does that mean to monitor? Um, and I think the, the, the ask was that. We looked at kind of our own um policies and practices that we have for monitoring parking lots and had a near that language. Um, I'm curious if there was just, forgot to add that piece, or if there was any.
If you saw the memo, the memo said that we were, we, Gabe was out for a while. So we were, sorry, the memo stated that we were waiting for Gabe's. Procedures on that, and written procedures. And so uh, he just delivered those. He's actually returning tomorrow. And so, uh, but I have those, but I, we need to, I think we still need to work on it. Yeah, apology session. No, 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 it's okay. Just wanna make sure, to clarify to the team that we did hear that request, but. Uh, so we did not put them in because we don't have them yet. There's still.
When do, when do we think we get present those?
Well, my goal is to have something, my goal is to have this all wrapped up.
Yeah, or it'll be on the action, it'll be on the action next week. At this point, it's just like wordsmithing, um. This will be in our, on our next meetings, actually.
Is that September ninth?
No, that's uh in the district.
Oh, sorry, twenty fifth?
Yeah.
August twenty-sixth.
So we will get, um, uh, so you, you said you already have that language for Gabe?
He just sent me something, but I, I think he needs some more clarity.
So what, what uh maybe we could ask, do you think it would be reasonable in the next week to have some clarity on that language? Um, cause I'm wondering if we could just make sure that we give um the pool a few days to review it. Um, uh, so that then we could get any last.
Or make sure it's what they need. So we actually have a meeting, so the pool district and I, we have a meeting on Thursday morning, correct, at ten o'clock? So maybe that's where we could sit in together and talk that through a little bit. Does that work for you as one of our agenda items?
At a higher level, you just got it, but at a higher level, do you have any? Three, thirty thousand foot, do you idea of what we do? I, when you're asking the athletic director, does he have people out in the parking lot? Does he have?
Well, that's what we need to clarify, because I think it honestly, we do, when we have our events, we have people out there.
They just walk around roughly.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure, but I, I think it's important to clarify because what we don't want is a safety issue to come up, like a student. I don't know, skateboarding and falling down and hurting themselves, whether or not they're full patron or to pull a school district patron, or actually just. A student coming, or anybody coming off, but I'm just using it as an example.
Well, this fact that there's a lot more cars there draws attention to the parking lot, the gas and air conditioning, got it.
Yeah, so I think what I wanna do is make sure that what he wrote down meets their needs. And so, um, and I actually know a little bit about that, cause I've had to, as a principal, always thinking, we do that all the time. So that's what we do. And so, I mean, I've, I've hopped out and done parking lot duties, so. Yeah, I'm always fun. So I just wanna make sure that we're, both parties are really clear what the expectations are. So they've written them down. We have them written procedures, but I wanna make sure it meets their needs.
Before we get out of the gate and start saying all this stuff, are you guys gonna have the ability to have somebody at that parking lot during the event? Are we, we starting to bark up a tree that's not possible?
No, I, I think what we need to know from operational standpoint is what is required. T P M P D should be used in service center. We'll plan accordingly for other companies, once it's agreed upon. So there's no right or wrong answer right now. It's just once you have the operational. Facts for what you guys need based on what's provided to us, you.
Does either of the, um, the school district or the pool have a, a camera pointing toward the?
I think we have cameras pointed in some of our parking spaces, but we also have learned through various investigations. That sometimes they don't cover big, that exact. The one place, the one place we have right here, I'm looking here, and he's nodding and smiling and affirming. So yeah, we have cameras, but do they cover every inch of the, the scope? No.
So I'm not saying this is a solution, but I am imagining that it's possible to even hire. A high school student to sit in the car in the corner between the two edges of the parking lot and just observe and make a phone call if there's some problem. Is that something that is like, with, cause I, I'm worried, like, somebody's out there walking around and they're not really a security. Um, person and, and I just don't want them to end up. You know, I used to work for Metro and I, I worried about bus drivers, they were told not to engage so that they wouldn't get into confrontations and I worry about. Anything from a senior citizen or a youth, or even a, somebody, you know, who looks like Charlie. Thinking that they have the authority to do something and it ends up into a legal situation. So just, we need to be careful.
I think most, so I think what's important is that, whatever, I think what, what I'm hearing from the pool authority, which is. And I think we, we want some consistency. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing. So they wanna know what we do so that they can sort of monitor that. I also think we have, we have joint events, right, where we're having things happening together. I think there's about four times, right? Brad, that we talked about that, maybe that we have some intense times where parking is in massive use. I think that's where we can join forces and make sure that we have enough volunteers to do those things. So I just think. They, what they're, what I'm hearing them ask is what is our process and procedure in a written form? So that we can all be clear and we can all be consistent and we can all make sure our patrons are safe. And I think after we get that, if there are concerns that you have as a school, where we were about how we're navigating those things, I think that's another conversation, separate from the floor.
I just know when a principal walks around the property with the authority she has.
Yeah.
Even if it's the parking lot, it's completely different than if we assign a volunteer to do it. And so I just wanna be careful to protect that person.
I just, I sat, I sat in the corner, kitty corner from your, where your street is. Ninety percent of people are really great. There's always gonna be some that, that it's a challenge.
Yeah.
This is what it is.
Living in a city.
Yeah, living in a city, a community, it's all its personalities.
Okay, anyway, um, all right, so, so Thursday, at Chelsea meeting, we'll have, uh, you know, kind of work out some of that language on monitoring. Uh, we'll get that clarity and updated language from our attorney around that particular paragraph around damages. We'll make these small little tweaks and then by August twenty. We'll make these small little tweaks and then by August twenty sixth, we should be good to go.
Yeah, because we're going to be, yeah, it's, it's a great time to talk about it. We're going to be talking about property acquisition. So it all goes together. So we're excited about that.
Well, sounds like we're on the road to success. All right.
Yeah, we're getting there.
In parking.
Yes. All right, folks. Um, thank you all so much. All right, folks. Um, uh, that is the end of our board discussion. Um, next we are moving to our questions only presentation section of the agenda, um, beginning with our twenty five, twenty six budget. Um, it is an action item this evening to approve the budget. This is kind of our last opportunity to, um, dig in about, I mean, not that there's a lot of changes we can do between now and, um, you know, and some ways is where this, but, um, all right. What additional questions do folks have about the budget on the table today?
I just want to say, uh, we're going somewhere late with the time of one, two and three federal releases. Um, could be more adoring to see it happen. Um, and we, we calculated stinky, they may not come through. So where does that put, um, I just want you to tell us how you feel about that, particularly their trend, um, change.
Good evening, any thoughts here? Well, I'm particularly happy that they made that change and, uh, funding's one didn't restore. So I, when I built the budget, um, as I presented at the last meeting, I had budgeted for both title change, title four, the reduced trade. So that is already reflected in the budget and I did not budget for title three. Um, I didn't make any changes to this existing budget because I do have ample capacity built into the system where it will be easy for me to, um, allocate that budget. Once we know what the final allocations are from OSPI. So, um, it was easier just to say that I was going to use the budget capacity rather than to go in and try and guess what our final allocations are because they haven't been to us yet. They're a little, those guys behind because of their budget cuts that they have to take. So that's where we are.
So we were on the conservative side before this news shooting for two percent. And I think I thought I heard you say last time, if this money was released, uh, from the federal government, we might be looking at potential three percent, maybe four percent.
Um, well, the total funding loss that we were receiving, uh, for this was, uh, three hundred fifty two thousand dollars. So not super, well, for us it's huge, but in grand scheme of things of a sixty one million dollar budget, it's not a lot of money. So, um.
So less than a percent?
Yeah.
Okay. Good. That's quite nice. All right. That was it for me.
I'm sure the brokers will continue, but, um, good news for now.
Yes, yeah, I'll take the good news for that.
Totally. What else?
No, other than good job. Honestly, very good job. I'm glad we're at two percent above. I just want to work and I appreciate it. And I look forward to it just getting better, you know, from here. And, um, I'm very happy for our partners that are in this, that was going to meet that also. So it's great. It's, it's good.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um, this is kind of related to the budget, but I just wanted to have a demo if, if you did at any point, but, um, I know a letter went out, um, uh, from Dr. Verjosa two weeks ago.
Yes.
Literally the same day, um, that we heard that the federal funding, so, um, you know, one, I just want to, um, thank Dr. Verjosa for continuing to do our best to be as transparent about the uncertainty as we can. Um, and I think it's just a, a reminder that things change on the dime and unfortunately the whim of a particular individual, right? Um, and so just being, I, I just again, want to, want to thank you and also recognize that that might've been pretty confusing, um, for folks who saw all of those things happen at once. Um, uh, uh, so, but you know, I'd rather that happened than, than the opposite, right?
Um, and we did follow up with a, uh, with a follow-up letter stating what the new facts are and the amount that we received.
It was all true at the time of writing.
Yeah, it's hilarious because I was on vacation and I thought I was going to text the team and go pause it. And then I thought, no, go, go. And it was on a timer. It was just on one of our systems timers. So anyway, so we sent her, we sent a corrected letter. It went out. And then we're sending some follow-up information for folks as well. We're just trying to be up to date with things and let people know what's happening. So.
So just a quick verification, outdoor schools, Washington, who's that?
So. AWSP, which is the Washington School Principals Association.
So where is, where is?
Well, it, it was a, it was, it's a weird mechanism how it was funded in the past. It was kind of like a pass through kind of OSPI to AWSP. Other schools, Washington to school districts. Well, what happened was they, not only do they, did they get the funding from OSPI in the past that has now been cut, but they also was, they were doing fundraising efforts. Um, in addition to the state funding that was received through OSPI. So now that the OSPI funding's gone away, they had some of the fundraising proceeds that they were able to use to fund, um, outdoor education.
Great for them. Thank you.
Yeah. It was, you guys, it was in the letter. I mean.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh. Scott got the email just like the, like right in time. It was, yeah. And it funds two of our schools. So we are working with, I have to thank Mrs. Danielle Eastman, who's actually working on some fundraising efforts with the Sea Wolves. So that'll be working on that. And then, and that'll be coming, right? The, here we go. And then I will also say that actually, um, Islandwood is also creating a GoFundMe account to support, uh, uh, this tech wall elementary. So we actually have two schools completely funded and then we have a process and program in place to fund the other remaining elementary school. But basically all of our, and they're guaranteeing no matter what, uh, Islandwood is guaranteeing no matter what, that all of our beneficiaries will get access to this year and Islandwoods are really excited. And the best news for our principals, which they're really excited about is that it's going to spring. It, it was believed for a while it was gone for a couple of months and they were done. And so somehow something happened. Uh, we just had enough, uh, maybe we did enough cadizyall that it just kind of karma kind of came back in a good way.
That's great.
Yeah.
These are the good news. Sweet. Uh, all right. Well, there's no additional questions on the budget. Then we'll move to our next questions only presentation, which is the board of directors handbook. Um, it's our second review. Um, this is to make sure that our new board members can get up to speed on being a board member. Talk a little.
Yeah, that is great.
Say this is not something that we had before. So this is really amazing. And I want to just say again, thank you so much to this board for doing all of this work, um, putting this together. You don't even make that down easy again. No. Um, yeah. So, uh, any kind of additional questions, thoughts, uh, things have, uh, folks, uh, folks have about this?
The one thing we talked about is, is, um, once we get the, the budget approved for the C F O.
Yep.
Is, so this last section is kind of empty at this point. School is your budget. There's so much of, I've got some low towards anyway, that section kind of needs to be added at some point.
A little more robust.
I think that's noted in the board.
Yeah.
Um, there's two little things I was thinking about. Um, one is on page eleven. Um, it's talking about meeting material. It talks about board reports kind of in the additional paragraphs at the bottom. And I was just curious, um, if it would make sense to actually add it as one of the main categories that happens since it is something that happens at every single regular board meeting. Uh, where she's having a doubt at the bottom. Okay. Um, that would be great. And then the other one, I don't know if this makes sense because it's something that would change on a regular basis. Um, but you know, this year we did our, our board values and kind of engagement agreements. I know the board, the board, um, oh, what are they called? Operating agreements aren't in here, but those values were really a, a slightly separate thing. Um, uh, hopefully those will continue, uh, not those same values, but hopefully the board will go through another process of, um, uh, you know, identifying what their shared and collective values are, um, creating some, um, goals around those that really, that really push those values forward. Um, so I don't know if it would be worth adding those, like as these are our current values, we'll go through a process or does that not make sense because?
So I, I had the same thought when I first started talking about in the very beginning, it has a whole bunch of how board members should be acting and there's some mixture of some of those values and the board member, you're expected to uphold these personal commitments.
Yeah.
Um, and I started saying like, how many of these match our values and goals? And then why aren't our values and goals in there?
Yeah.
So it feels like, you know, board future works can change all they want, but wherever it's at now.
Should be unleashed. Yeah.
That's how I feel.
I, 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 I agree. I think that that feels like it makes a lot of sense to me. So even just adding a, a front, uh, you know, page kind of at the beginning.
Yeah, like after the table of contents and whatever the chart is, but, um, the, the, you know, circle chart thing, but, um, either as a, as a appendix, one or two.
Thanks. Awesome. Uh, those are one of the things that I think, you know, I would just be curious from, um, you know, two of our newer board members. Um, and then, you know, potentially incoming board member, what, um, you know, feels like was really hard to understand about how the board operates? Does this kind of capture those things? Is there, it just feel, I mean, this in and of itself is a huge start, right? This is a huge, um.
When I got to the conference, I was surprised to hear that I had two years to get through certain kinds of teachings.
Hmm.
And I hadn't heard about it. I mean, it hasn't looked like this and I don't know that it's in here. So, and then maybe just an extension of the last thing. Uh, but for me, it's like an obligation that a new board member should be aware of. So they take those courses intentionally.
The, the required courses.
Big, long ones. It's like two to three hours and a lot of interactivity. They're great.
Yeah.
Finance and, uh.
It is right here. It is mentioned in twenty, twenty, page twenty six.
Okay.
I do wonder though, if it could be, um.
It's just like.
Highlighted even a little bit more like particularly those ones like an OPMA, right? That is a, like, we are legally required to take that training.
Yeah.
Um, so, so could having it in orientation, and this is really bad to say, but sometimes it's like, this is orientations, maybe a little bit more of a suggestion.
It was.
Versus, this is something you have to take. And if you don't like it, you could be personally.
Member.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Things that, you know, minimums or whatever. All I know is I accidentally took the equity, equity and the finance one. So I got two out of one conference.
Yeah.
And we had one more to go. And I was like, I didn't know I had to. I just was attracted to those topics.
Maybe it could just be a separate appendix. That's just here are the state mandated required trainings.
And then also to kind of add on to that, just, um, you also have to report to the state, you know, your.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I thought was banned. I, I came in, so.
The F ones?
Yeah. So I was like, I'm not telling, who is this? So nobody explained that.
The public knocking on your door.
Yeah. So that's a very important thing. Yeah, it would be helpful for a new member for sure.
Yeah, that's a pretty big one because they're more likely to come after you if you took that one.
I did. I got fined for it.
Yeah.
I didn't ask. I just assumed it was banned. So, and then I had to do it. So I turned it in late and it is what it is.
But, you know, and then some people when they navigate through it, like, and sure, you know, they're, they're telling you to list all your properties, but you've already said what your home address is, right? So stupid homeowners may assume this is one. So I don't have any other properties. Next thing you know, they're calling you up on, like, how can you even put your home address there? And I'm like, I didn't know too. So, yeah.
It is.
You're saying they're really strict. I mean, well, anyway, no problem.
But I'm glad.
Campaign finance laws and all the problems there. Anyway.
This is perfect. This is great. This is going to be very.
Well done, Deborah.
So next up is this, is this something that we need to approve for it to kind of start being actionable? Or is it just now that it exists, it becomes a part of our?
I think this should be approved at the next meeting because some changes that need to be made now. So I think it should be approved at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Review once a year.
Perfect. Let's do, we should put a, a review process in there or even just naming this handbook or reviewing, reviewing or like.
Yeah.
Okay. Cool. Thank you, everyone. This is exciting work. All right. Next is our S R O M O U review. Um. That, were there any changes that were made to this M O U that's being shared? Okay. Um, I think just a we did a lot of work to get this M O U, um, across the finish line last year. Um, and I know that there were, um, uh, particularly for me, I think just, um, you know, cautiously optimistic about what implementation of the M O U would look like. Um, and so, uh, I was really hoping to be able to hear a little bit about how this was being implemented and if at the school level and even at the scholar level, if there was any, I liked recommendations or adjustments, right? You know, the words on a page, what they look like in practice are often, you know, can, can be, can be a little bit different. Um, it was a little bit too late to be able to get some of the principals here to be able to chat about that. Did hear from, um.
I have one assistant principal online. If you want to ask questions from the middle school.
Okay.
And then, um, Latanya sent the email. Um, and I think we could also, um, ask them to see if they could come or give us some reflections at the next meeting if we want to.
You know, and, and I don't think I necessarily particularly in, um, I would definitely look at for Ms. Perez, but you know, after kind of seeing the message from Ms. Parker and, um, understanding like the, the, um, the value, right of the collaboration. Um, I certainly don't want to do anything that prevents it from, from continuing on. That's not, that's not my intention here. I do think that it would be valuable though to add, um, a, a step in the process before it comes to the board for review on a yearly basis. I'd love to get scholar input and staff input and have that presented to us, um, so that we are regularly ensuring that, I mean, that scholar input is probably the most important, um, particularly.
Asking.
Well, I'm starting to have a strong, yeah. I guess it's also only one scholar, right? About three thousand over two, two thousand, uh, plus. Um, so, uh, so yes, I'm not discounting and I will always look at you to, to give us that input. And, um, I want to make sure that we're hearing from a diverse range of identities, right? Who have very different relationships with law enforcement.
Very fair.
Um, and to make sure that we are again, in practice, um, it is responsible and caring and as anti-racist as we can possibly make it. Um. What else do you have about that sort of program issue?
Um. Yeah, I think you need a lot more students than just me, but, um, I personally, I know a lot of people that are indifferent to it. I know a lot of people that feel very uncomfortable with it. I know people that are, that think the school resource, school resource officer that we have is a cool guy. I have people that just don't like the police in general and don't like them having, you know, being around them. Um, I'm not the best person to ask you, even, even though, you know, I thank you for your vote of confidence. By look at this guy, uh, maybe look at a couple more people than just me, uh, because I, I'm one of the people that feel indifferent to it. I don't really feel a change of environment from it, but I've never had issues with the police. I'm like a lot of my friends that have. So, yeah. Get a bigger committee. Yeah. Oh, who for thought? Why are we reviewing this in the middle of summer where there are scholars around and schedules are getting ready for next year?
Honestly, we cannot have any S R O officers in the fall, um, if we don't have any M O U.
Okay.
So that's one reason that it's brought for the summer. And then to be honest, it went, it, June was like crazy busy end of the year graduation, graduation.
Yeah.
And I, and then I literally went to there and was like, oh my God, can you?
Yeah, it got out of.
So do we have any blurry issues that have arisen due to this?
The only thing that's happened this year that we've had to course correct on a couple of things is clarifying. So the language has changed from this year from before.
Okay.
So we have, we wanted to make sure that we had clarity on, so for example, guns.
Mm hmm.
Uh, clarity on, um, on uniforms. So if, like, if they wore the uniform, it's because it was emergencies where they had to go somewhere. But if they were in schools to prioritize the.
Dressing down.
Dressing down.
So every time it was.
Yeah. Yeah, that was something that we had to talk about. I, I actually had to address that with the.
So the fall closing should be planned.
Yeah. So, so what I had to do, to be honest, is, um, I had to reset. Yeah. So, so what I had to do, to be honest, is, um, I had to reset. Uh, so when we have meetings with Chief Drouver, uh, because I meet with him every month. I would bring, if we noticed something, I would bring it to Chief Drouver. And then also make sure our principals reread the MOU.
Okay.
So I would say Principal Parker had lots of feedback on that.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Brett was more about, you know, he was more open to even the old way of doing it. So I just think different philosophies around how, and how, and actually to be honest, SRO officers showed it a little differently in both the high school. So I think we had to do a lot of course correcting this year. I don't think the MOU language, it's not the MOU language so much, it's the implementation.
Right, right, for sure.
So for us, it's about implementation and, and then making sure. And for our goal, and this is the tricky part about SRO, I've been doing this work for a long time with principals and such. The tricky part is always, it's very clear what the SRO's role is when things are fine. And it's also kind of clear what the SRO role is when things are kind of in the middle. That's usually the principal's job.
Yeah.
It's trickier when it's a real serious thing.
Like an active.
Yeah. And so that's the part that we wanted more collaboration on because, uh, just to ensure that we were mitigating. With bias, because we have, you know, entries, discipline goals, all those kinds of things will play. And if the principal was consulted. On those things, and that's the piece.
Yeah.
But I will say, we get the reports.
We.
We have things. I would say Chief Drouver, he, if there's a problem that he has on his side, he has shared them with me. So that we can address them, like I'm talking about supervision from his point of view for his staff, right?
He did highly adapt it to our.
He, yes. And every time I, I've met with him about anything. He's been very, he listens, he understands, and he's been very responsive. I will say, uh, we have a new leader in the middle school. And so that'll be my job is actually to meet with them and orientate them on what our expectations are. Because honestly, some of the issues we've come up with have been more in the middle school. It's just more like, uh, it's the same officer that was before. So just making sure everyone's really clear, um, what their role and responsibility is. And the focus is to have the SROs engaged with the students, part of the community. Not standing to the side like in a supervisor, you know, like watching. And so that's, those are just shifts we just need to keep working on. And I think engaging this principal is going to be a really critical opportunity.
Yeah. So from us, how do we get to meeting her requirement and have assigned before our school year?
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying. It's like, I, I'm not, um, not necessarily gonna. I was originally thinking about potentially trying to postpone the action to the end of the month. Um, I, I don't, I don't think I need to do that. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to pause. I think what I'm asking is that we get a, a little bit more of established routine. Around what feedback around the process looks like before it's being brought to the board. So we actually have some. Informed data to say what's working and what's not. Um, I think I'm, I have no reason to not trust the leaders in the building, right? Um, and, uh, to, to say like, you know, these are, these are things that actively, and I agree, like it is about implementation.
Yeah.
Words on a page only goes so far. Um, but. Can be clarified.
Yeah. And I think with a collaborative spirit, we've had things come up, no doubt. We have, I, my whole team can attest to that. We've, and we've, we've had to work them through, we've had to talk them through, work with the principals and work with the students at Techwilla. And I think, um, we're all, you know, we're all in it. But I will say, um, I've been very, um. I just will say, I really enjoy working with Chief Drouver. I, I will just state that for the record. Um, every time I've gone to Chief Drouver with anything related to, um, either our policies in January or February. Or even our SROs, he's been very responsive and collaborative and really talks to me to work it through. So that we have mutual understanding. So I really appreciate that. And so I appreciate that, that, that partnership. And then, and I know my principals are deeply involved with the SROs in the building. Yeah.
Um, Ms. Perez, I'd love to, if, if you're still available and listening in, um, if you just have any. Um, high level or detailed thoughts of, um. Observations, anecdotes about the SRO.
Absolutely. Are you getting able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, so Ms. Rieger, our new principal and I, and we were able to talk this afternoon. And, um, we did put together just a few, kind of the highlights of having this program available. And, um, I can kind of go over those with you. And then if you have any specific questions, I would love to answer those for you. Um, so first of all, what we've really appreciated is kind of just the collaboration, um, from. Our resource officers as far as, um, we've had, you know, family engagement night, things like that, um, and just. Knowing that if we need any assistance, you know, if there's something that happens in the parking lot or anything in the community, then we do have that piece. Um, we wanted to highlight a couple of the things. My dog's at home. Um, a couple of the things that he was able to, that our SRO was able to really help us with. Was actually, we did a really neat family engagement night. And, um, he actually was able to help us get a lot of donations and resources. And. That was really appreciated and our families were so excited. He, um. It was Family Fund Center and we were given all of these incredible, uh, gift cards for Family Fund Center. And when we did our events, several events, the families were so excited. And a couple of other things that we've done, um, we. He basically has a group of kids at lunchtime that love to talk with him. Um, he'll play Uno with, he'll play games. So it's kind of just that being. Part of the environment and he's not there to supervise. Yeah. If, if any, if there are any supervision things, I'll take care of them. Uh, Ms. Rieger now will take care of them. But we don't ever use him in that supervisory role. We use. I really tell people he's a community, you know, community connection, a community resource. Um. The other thing that I really want to highlight is we've actually had parents who things have happened. Say for example, at their apartments or, um, you know, things, you know, out in the streets. And they'll come in and say, can, can we see the police officer? We've got a question. And that's been really helpful just to know that he is there as that community resource. And, um, again, we're just really, you know, we want it to be a community resource. We want it to be a community connection. And, um, really a positive for our kids and to see that, um, that we work together with the Techwilla Police Department.
Thank you.
So, yeah, one of the questions, I mean, this came up, you know, when we were talking about this a long time ago was. You know, for students that are coming from maybe a country where, you know, police are not their friends. And we have a good number of those, of students. Um, what, is there any particular outreach? It sounds like maybe some of what you're describing, but is it, you know, are there any particular outreach to those, those kinds of students? That maybe, uh, stand offish from police just because of their, you know, lived experience?
Um, well, one other thing I forgot to actually mention, we had him go into every single one of our homerooms. And, um, that's considered our advisory, our homeroom, and just kind of introduce who he was as a person. And, um, then kind of what he is there for as far as the community piece. And, um, that also gave all of the students kind of a small, um, group to be able to ask him questions. And that was, you know, people were just kind of like, oh, how long have you been doing this? That kind of thing. Um, I'm not aware of any students that, um, kind of came. That had the trauma background that, uh, needed to talk with him, but I can definitely also check in with our counselors. So I think that would be a really good, um, you know, connection. And then also our MLL teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a, that's a really important part, right? Because when we were, we were, uh, in conversations, uh. To get the SROs back into the schools, one of the things that we spent a lot of time talking about is, you know, how we're gonna ensure that. Um, again, particularly young people or young people's families who have had negative experiences with police. Whether that be personally or just historically, um, how we are ensuring that we're building that bridge, right? Because that's the intention, I believe, right, of the program.
Absolutely.
Um, a, a, a better relationship between communities and the folks that are there to serve and protect them. Um, uh, and so I, I think it would be really valuable to think about continuing on what it looks like to. Actually do some to- more targeted outreach, the lack of better word. Um, to make sure that there's, we're actually doing that with building. Like I think about. And, and this is probably not a fair place where my mind went, uh, and I, I wanna, I wanna own that. But, you know, you mentioned that he, he's got a sort of kind of a, a, a group of kids that he plays with, uh, games at, at the table. Are those the same group of kids? Or is he intentionally seeking out other kids that don't feel as comfortable coming up to him and just being in a casual setting? Is it all white kids? You know, so I just want to be like, I want to be really honest about, um. Where and how we're, we're actually actively bridging that gap, um, and, and fair enough. Um, uh, and, yeah, so thanks, thanks for bringing that up. I think that's really, really important to think about.
Yeah, which is why I, I think when we're finding out, I mean, this feedback, I mean, we pretty much knew it wasn't going to be perfect the first time. And you're, you know, and that's right. You're getting feedback and you're getting feedback. And there's just, that's going to be, I think, need to be important to continue. I mean, this, this is not an easy thing to do. So as long as we keep improving and feeding back, then I think we're probably.
And then so my question to you as a board, because I heard, and I agree, you should have done this in spring. Um, but it was, you know, different when we planned the SMOU, we never really talked about what the continuing pieces are. So I was reflecting your recommendation from the board, what you would like to see in terms of feedback. So I forget, since we're already adding, now list some things to add to the calendar. If you just want to update, well, if you want to update review, it could be under maybe, um, maybe we could talk about it. When one of the high school and middle school presents or something, right? I'm just adding, wondering. What was an appropriate time to get that review of feedback and information and hear directly from our principals about how it's going? Or even staff.
I mean, I think I, I could see that coming in a lot of different ways. I do think that like, yeah, you know, work session. Where we're meeting with Buster High School and Chilwell Middle School could be a place, you know, I actually don't have an issue with the timing. That just happens necessarily if the information has been gathered already and presented to us, right? So if you're getting information from students or scholars before they leave school and then presenting it to us a month later. I don't have issue with that necessarily. And, you know, I think the more that we can hear directly from people, the better. So I, you know, maybe it's that. You know, near the end of the year, there's a, a quick information campaign that maybe the, the student advisory, uh, group leads. Um, that gets some feedback around, you know, it, it can be more in SRO. It can be about school safety as a whole. It can be about a sense of connection and belonging. There's different things that could be connected to it.
Yeah, that's, I should, that's when I was again, I was looking at teaching and learning school safety plan.
Well, yeah. So I, I, I guess for, for me, I'm, I, it, and, and, you know, obviously, I will be here and share, but. I would hear the same. The point is, is do we have the feedback? That's, that's the most important thing, I think.
So on change management, they have a thing they call pulse check, P U L S E check. And they, they are typically not, never more than five questions. And two of those questions allow them free form responses. Um, and the, the first three are basically asking them. You know, on a scale of five, basically, how they, you know, um, you know, they feel positive about having a SRO. Are there areas that they might want to see improvement? And I can't remember what the third one is, but it's pretty routine. And it might be smart to do just a pulse check with the students and faculty and staff, um, through an email. Like, uh, a month in, so we got the head of the year. And then look to see if they change it based on the, the comments that they made. By maybe springtime or if you want winter, but it seems like twice a year be, I mean, it's a one. Person at the campuses, let's not overdo it, right? But if something, you know, pops up there, then you can focus on it. Nothing does and, you know, everybody's had a shot to admit you as a comment.
Yeah, and, and the pulse checks, love them. They're such a great, I think that, yeah, that kind of that bookend would could be really helpful, quick, easy way. I know that was something that we were, um, Dr. I was also talking about related to like CEI data. Um, and as y'all know, we recently just approved, um, a partnership with Thought Exchange. Um, that's going to be replacing a CEI survey for us, um, doing something different. And, uh, right, yeah. And, um, we did, we had talked about getting them to do some pulse checks as well.
Yeah.
Um, so we could maybe, uh, ask about a specific one, uh, related to SROs or, or just your own and say something, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah. But I just, the idea went to the end of the year to, you know, you've lost one fourth of the high school. And you could have remedied stuff that was underway and they have some feelings about it and then off.
Yeah, a hundred percent. I do know that, um, Ms. Parker, um, and I'm not, uh, sure exactly what happened at the middle school around a little bit. I know Ms. Parker really involved the scholars in thinking about what the implementation of all this would look like. Um, so even a post, um, you know, survey about, uh, you know, that would have been, I think, really valuable.
Yeah.
Cool. Any additional thoughts, questions, concerns here?
So from here, are we saying we're gonna move ahead with this? Uh, or do we think there's some, some modification process is gonna happen between now and approving it before the school year? We've got like one meeting.
Yeah, I mean, it's on, it's on action for today.
Oh, okay.
Um, so. We should, uh, yeah, should probably be okay to, to keep it there. Yeah. Um, all right. Next is, uh, any additional questions on these policies for review? So there's, uh, several of them. Six policies, um, mostly just minor changes and updates to them. What additional questions you folks have?
So I just comment on the, the last one, which is on our board business, which is the last six to eight hundred. That's the update to the safety operations and maintenance. And it's related to the, uh, water quality and indoor air quality. So. Um, so water quality is related to, uh, that in the water. Um, we didn't really, we don't have a policy on that. I did, by the way, asked Wassa, does any others have a policy on these things? And apparently they don't. They're typically included in procedures, which are more detailed, but they don't have, and nobody could come. Come up with a, with a policy level one. And, and I think it's important to have those, um. To there. In the case of quality, water quality, I mean, we're due, we have done that. So, and the references to the, you know, Department of Health standards, which is, you know, testing for lead in the water. And, and after some number of years of, um, work with that, we are, you know, have completed that to less than. Five parts per billion on lead and all the water sources. So, but just to have that, we need up there to make sure that it continues ahead. And this is part of the policies that we have. Now, the indoor air quality is a little more, uh, complicated. Um, but again, I, I worked on this with, um, uh, Professor Elena Austin of the University of Washington. Who, uh, uh, Mr. Camacho brought down for, to talk to the students one day. And she works in this area. So, um, I got only, uh, got some feedback on the policy as well as, um. She gave us some procedures that we can work on, which I fed to Dr. Josas so that, uh, and she's willing to work with us to, to improve. Procedures as well. Um, the, so we've done, in terms of indoor air quality, there's kind of two big areas. One of them, it came up during COVID and that is, you know, are we exchanging air, you know, outdoor air with indoor air? Uh, you know, obviously COVID was, is a, you know, an airborne virus. So you don't want, you know, stagnant air accumulated in the classroom. And so, um, we actually, uh, so we've got a grant to study our, our ventilation systems. To see if there is exchanging at the appropriate kind of rates and their standards for those with the Department of Health. And then the one that was missing, however, in that situation is what is the outdoor air is garbage. Which could very well happen with, uh, smoke. Smoke is actually coming our way as we speak. Um, and that one involves, uh, monitoring, you know, what's called fine particle. Um, PM two point five is a technical term, but it's fine particles in the air. And, you know, that's been tied pretty heavily to areas that are low income. Um, because of industrial pollution, airport pollution, smoke. Uh, smoke is kind of, doesn't differentiate much between high and low income areas, but some of the industrial stuff does. And so we, we don't, we have not really, to my knowledge, tested any of our indoor quality on that particular subject. And there are, you know, grants available for these kinds of things. And you can mitigate it with, um. With, uh, air purifiers inside it when, um, Mr. Camacho brought down the folks from. King County, they actually had a ton of air purifiers, which are intended, were intended for homes and they gave out to students to take home. Of course, in a fashion, you need industrial strength size, but it's a bit bigger. But, um, you know, there's ways to get those. We talked to some, some legislators, um. Next door in the thirty third district and the state funded some of that. There's, there's a lot, there's money for doing this, but we need to. We need to, um, kind of measure, measure, find out where the, uh, problems are. The, uh, Professor Austin, you know, in terms of the procedures, uh, provided us what's called kind of a. Uh, stair step, uh, uh, procedure so that you kind of focus, figure out where the, where the most problem is and then focus on the theories and. So you can measure, you know, what the particle is and then, for example, we know how many, you know, issues. Where concentrations of asthma are and those are the students that are being impacted most. There's studies that show that, you know, the, the air quality can impact test scores in the brain and all that kind of stuff, so. Anyway, I think it's, it's important for us to have these kind of high level policies to kind of. Start driving the work to actually do, make sure that our indoor quality is good and it's also important because. As we think about, you know, coming up to potentially having a bond to rebuild, asking you, um. We want that included in, in a bill because it's, you can do really, um, great things when you start from scratch and then build a HVAC system in with. You know, all the appropriate MR filters to filter out, you know, all this stuff and. So, you know, we need to have those in place as we start, you know, the process for, for building, so. So anyway, um, I put that, uh, put that together and, um. Uh, like I say, the professor is willing to, to work with us, the next step on that would be procedures, uh, to get it down into the.
I think, um, thinking of putting this together, much needed, uh, I think my one curiosity is, um. Uh. I wanna make sure that we were putting in policy that is actually implementable, right? So I'm thinking about, um, even the, 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 the finances necessarily do, uh, uh. A study, and so I wonder if we could have like a timeline attached to this, even for like its initial implementation that's, that gets superintendent. Two years for me to option this policy to have certain things done, does that seem reasonable? I still want to see in a place where we're like.
Yeah, so the policy, that's why, you know, the superintendent will develop the procedures. So I kind of leave it to them, like I say, this, fortunately, we're in a time here where environmental and the state. Issues have, um, a revenue source from the Kind of Commitment Act. And so, you know, like I say, districts around us have gotten, it's gonna be, it doesn't necessarily, I mean. Obviously requires some more staff time to go get those grants, but, um, it's, it's a good, it's a good place to be. I wouldn't wanna necessarily put a timeline on it, write in policy at high level. I want to hear from the staff more about, you know, what they think is, is reasonable in terms of putting it together. Um. So, you know, just kind of, I mean, um, yeah, and, and like I say, the, the model that Reverend Ross knows kind of, uh, has looked at and I guess other districts have done. Is to, um, yeah, kind of start with trying to figure out where the, the highest lead is and then start to work down. You know, from there and so you can, you can kind of fit it into whatever, you know, money you have available for that.
So I, I don't see any language in here that seems like I'd wanna throw it out. Uh, we do need to do a spell check, cause I see lowercase superintendent. And uppercase board of directors type things. Um. I, I, I agree, policy unless you say within two years. I don't expect to see a schedule inside of a policy on how to implement, it's like setting the policy for people to come back, propose how they're gonna do it. Um, but this, this to me, what I read in terms of the changes to this, I don't have any issues with any of it. And thank you for spelling out the acronyms.
Um, based on kind of what you've seen, Dr. Rosas, um, uh, the, the policy suggestions and, uh, uh, procedure implications. Do you feel like it's applicable within, um, kind of where our.
Well, one other thing I wanna make sure is we have our operational team, so Amy and, um, Will Leon involved in some of that. And I also wanna have a meeting with the, the professor's willing to meet with me and talk about this a little bit in terms of procedural, so. Uh, I'd like to start, set that after probably the start of the year, I wanna start then. Um, so, uh, and we're doing right now a lot of procedural policy write-ups right now, so. Um, my guess is we could probably target. I'm guessing probably if we start, cause we're amping at for start of the year, so I'm thinking we'd be up to one, I remember we set up some time. To have something by mid-year or even towards, between mid-year and spring, um, we can do that, it's gonna take a little time now.
Yeah. Okay, first of all, I want to involve staff. All right, any additional questions, um, on this policy or any of the other ones? Here. All right, uh, next is our last question only presentation around professional civic and service organization memberships. This is a report that is required by policy five five two five. Any additional questions, comments, thoughts here? All right. Here none, uh, we'll now move on to our action item, fortunately, agenda, um, beginning with action item A, which is the approval of the Human Resources Staffing Report.
So move.
Any questions, comments? All in favor of approval?
Aye.
All right, next is a action item B, approval of the temporary out of endorsement request.
So. Second, yep.
Any questions or comments?
I just thought this person must be very good. To have this, so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing this, cause it's great.
Are you, are you?
I'm so amazed by your whole policy setup. I've been loving like interacting with this and seeing and now for the trip. I can tell that you guys really love it and I, I'm really happy to join the district that is so loved with this.
I'm excited.
Well, all in favor of approval?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, all right, next is, um, action item C, approval of resolution nine, six, five, adoption of our twenty five, twenty six budget.
So.
You already had your answer for questions, comments, just kidding. If there are any, okay, I'll put in favor of approval.
Yes.
All right.
Aye.
Right, now you can go on vacation and start working on next year's budget. All right, next is, um, action item D, approval of the out of state travel request for the N C A N conference.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next is approval of out of state travel request for the P E B C I. Conference.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah, this is the one that's going to New Orleans, which one would it go?
You wanna go? I do, take you.
Funded entirely by advanced research, obviously.
All right, I'll put in favor of approval.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then next is our, uh, action item F, approval of the SRO MOU.
So.
Um, just to comment, as long as we are committed to getting some of those things in place, um, I'm okay with it.
I'd like to do this.
So all in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye, um, and then before we go to our last, uh, uh, bit of public comment, I wanna hand it over to Dr. Frisner, of course, to put up dates.
I just, I have, but I wanna just keep it really simple, just what's coming up. Um, just reminding everyone, we are starting school on Wednesday, um, September third, which is very different from what we've done before, it's actually Tuesday after Labor Day. No, it's Wednesday, so just reminding everybody of that. We have a back to school resource guide on our website, um, and so please also follow, um, Techwell School District on Facebook and Instagram. Um, just because we're updating things, we have the vaccination clinic coming, et cetera. Um, are all our office managers will be in the building Monday, August eighteen, so this coming Monday, so if you have, uh, that's right, right, isn't it Monday? I'm looking at.
Yeah, then it's called Friday, the fifteenth.
Oh, Friday, I get to remember Friday the fifteenth. But I still think we can let people know something after Monday.
Perfect.
You'll maybe come on Monday the eighteenth, so that's great. And then just, I wanna ask the board to see you all know too. This week we welcomed, um, our new food service director, Christine Lee. Uh, so we met all, uh, met Ms. Lee today and so she, they go that contract with Chartwell, so we're excited to have Ms. Lee join us. And then the last thing, just to everyone else, all staff that's listening. Um, our staff kick off for all staff is Wednesday, August twenty seventh, they start promptly at nine AM at Foster High School back. All right, and that's, I'll just make sure everyone you asked for the record.
Thank you very much.
Question, why, why on Wednesday and not Tuesday?
Why Wednesday?
And not Tuesday?
It's pardon.
That works for me, I just.
Otherwise it'd be Tuesday, but it's, but it's pardon, it's in a pardon, you can't.
That'll be it.
All right, so there's just our kind of opportunity for public comment, there's anyone on the line that would like to offer public comment, you can raise your hand or put your name in the chat. Anyone else, a new person? Okay, seeing none of.
Starts in.
Either, um, well, if I can get a motion to a general reading.
A move.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For our turn, thank you everyone, some things to sign in the folder, I think it's just the first.
So, so I'll say it, you guys, I'm just gonna figure out.